So this is the meeting of the Northampton zoning board of appeals. Notice of this hearing was published on February 13th and February 20th. And both items of the agenda were continued from our last meeting date because of the technical issue. We'll start the hearing by ask, I guess, members present are Elizabeth Silver, myself, Aaron Irvin, and Maureen Scanlon, plus Nathan Chung from the City of Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability. And we are recording this hearing. And we always start the hearing before we get to the agenda items with an invitation to any members of the public who may be present to offer comments on items other than the two agenda items that we're going to be hearing tonight. So Nathan, I don't think there are any other people present. Is that correct?
That's correct. No other people besides applicant and the board and the staff are present.
Okay, so seeing none. And also Nathan, could you confirm you did not receive any comments from the public in writing by 4:00 P. M. today?
No, nothing arrived for any of the hearings.
Okay, great. All right. In that case, it's after 5:30, so we can proceed to hear the application for a special permit for an oversized slash multiple signs by Sign Techniques of 968 Bridge Road, properties at MAP ID 18D-017. This hearing is continued from February 27th. And this is a request for a special permit which would require a super majority vote of three of three members. And technically, I believe Elizabeth, Maureen, and I are the three full voting members. And then Aaron is an alternate, if I'm not mistaken. And alternates are invited to participate fully and provide any comments and questions that they have. But the three voting members on this item are Maureen, Elizabeth, and me. And approval of their request for the special permit would require unanimous vote of all three members. So, and I will ask anyone who presents or addresses the board to first give your name and address for the record that's being kept. And with that, we will ask the applicant or the representative of the applicant to give us a very brief description of the request that's been submitted for the special permit.
Hi, Tracy Janik of Sign Techniques, 361 Chickaby Street in Chickaby, Mass. And yes, I am seeking approval for special permit for oversized and multiple signs for Ford of Northampton at 968 Bridge Street. I know signage on that side of the building has been removed by us in the expectation that they will be granted permission to install. It's a one foot by 10, excuse me. Let me, let me look at that number again. It's a two foot, 10 inch sign by 14 feet, so square footage. I believe was submitted, Nathan, I don't have that written down. It's a 39.2 square feet that we would be asking to be able to put a sign up. The sign is required by corporate, so it's a corporate company that's asking Board of Northampton to install this sign on their building.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members?
Yeah, I have a couple. Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned something about existing signs having been removed in anticipation of this. What did that entail?
It was just a non-illuminated. I believe it was just a temporary banner, so we just took it off of that side of the building. I believe it just said Board of Northampton. I don't have pictures in front of me, but it was very simple, just Board of Northampton on the side.
So what we're looking at, the that's the only signage that would be seen except for, from that viewpoint, except for the existing fairly prominent Ford logo that's from that same viewpoint, but on a recessed wall. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's the, the Ford logo is on that showroom wall that's all the way to the left. This would be on the protruding garage that's further to the right, just over where their commercial vehicle center would be now.
So is this prompted by an introduction of a new, I'm just trying to get a sense of what prompted this? Is this, does this come from a new sector of service that's commercial vehicle work?
Um, I don't know how to answer that. I can, I can get that answer for you, but it probably wouldn't be today. I was just presented by the corporate sign company that is Ford and was asked to quote, to be able to apply for and install this sign on, on Board of Northampton's building. So they're, they're slowly changing signage on all existing Ford dealerships. So I just did one in Holyoke for Marquette Ford. So they're trying to, they're branding a little differently right now. So they're just trying to keep all of their signage from one showroom to another showroom to another dealership. They're cohesive.
Right. Yeah, it looks like its placement is meant to be a little directional to that particular commercial vehicle, so I'm
I think so. I think so. I think they've always had commercial service. But this might just be calling out that this is the Commercial Vehicle Center entrance. Like I said, I can, I cannot answer for them in that aspect, just knowing that they were presented to me to apply for this.
And my, I think my remaining question, and thank you for bearing with me, Tracy,
No problem.
The, the specification for it to be illuminated. It, I assume that the business function of that is not nighttime business, that it's daytime business. And I think that large recessed Ford sign is already illuminated. So I'm just, I'm just inquiring about the rationale for wanting one more illuminated sign.
Well, I, I don't know the hours of their commercials. They do have after-hours pickup, but they would have it on, you know, with winter hours, it does get dark a little bit earlier in the evening, and that would be on. You know, towards the summer, it may not turn on. I don't see a note here on whether or not it would be on a photo cell, that it would just turn on when it became dark enough to turn on. Let me see if I have that in all of these notes. I don't see a call out for photo cell, so I think it would just be on along with the rest of, with the rest of their signage.
Meaning what? Meaning that it would be on the same whatever timer, sorry?
I don't know if Scott has his signage on a timer. I do know I've seen the front signage on, driving on the highway, passing by. So I apologize. I, I don't know how long the sign would be on, if it would be on all night. I know it just faces the highway, so it would just be for cars to see.
I don't, I don't think it could be on all night, right? Under, Nathan, under our ordinances, the lighting is determined to, when it can be on is determined by the ordinance, right?
That's correct. You know, lighting, the brightness, other requirements are the ones that's not waivable or that's not controllable by the zoning board. So the applicant would need to work with the building department, you know, to implement it according to zoning ordinance 350-12.2. And, and of course, one interesting detail is, you know, this is a multiple signs and it's a potential oversized sign, depending how you look at it. So obviously, the, the lighting surface would take up more surface than what would be allowed by default. But otherwise, other aspects of the lighting would need to comply with the zoning ordinance. And the zoning board of appeals cannot waive those requirements.
And that's okay. If there's requirements of one it needs to shut off, then I would bring that, I would bring that forward to Scott Serra and let him know that it just needs to be off by this time according to your bylaws. That's not a, I'm not opposed to that, to telling him. I've, I've had to do that before.
Right. And it sounds like that's not something we need to address because it's governed independently by the existing ordinance. Is that, Nathan, what you're saying?
That is my interpretation, yes. Obviously, if there is some more sensitivity about the, or more concern about the largeness or multiplicity of the sign, obviously, that's a factor, but otherwise, yes, it is, the lighting aspect is governed by the existing zoning ordinance.
And it's in the zoning ordinance that that identified that criteria, so, or those limitations. So would love to know if there's something in there specific to that, or if we should consider that as a board to make sure we have addressed it.
It's also, as
I tried looking for it. I could find lighting criteria for ground signs, but not for wall signs.
It's, the location of this building is in heavily commercial area and I don't even, I know that there are a couple of houses right there on Bridge, but I don't think this even backs up into that, either of those houses. I think there are two before you cross Jackson. So I, I don't think it's going to affect any residential
I believe the homes that you're talking about are on the opposite side of the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are not my concerns at all, Elizabeth, but I, I agree with you there. It's simply that I'm trying to figure out where our baseline is, knowing that we've already approved special permits for signs several years back, and we're adding on to that. And I would like to understand, have a better understanding of additional lighting in relation to just, you know, dark sky and visual clutter. That's all.
Yep. Of course. Nathan?
If I may, yes, just to kind of answer that question. In the ordinance, zoning ordinance, there's a section called sign lighting under 12.2. Oh, excuse me, there's somebody, oh. I think it's the, excuse me, I think it's the mayor, like, give me one second. Give me one second.
And I have a recollection of hearing a case with the tall sign, right? Didn't we do that at one point, David? Where we shortened the height of the sign that's in the, in the front there?
Yeah, I, I think this, as Nathan said, I think the size is one of the things that we're, you know, entitled to address. But I thought when they redid the dark skies ordinance, it kind of maybe took the rest of that out of our hands. And I wonder if some of the earlier decisions Maureen's referring to predated the current ordinance? Because I agree, Maureen, I remember times where we've said, you have to turn off the sign at 8:00 P. M. or an hour after closing, whatever.
And yeah, if I may read, I'm sorry, it was the, it was one of the staff leaving, so we decided goodbye. Yeah, I'll read a small part of it. This is under sign lighting, you know, 350-12.2 D. 7. So under C, all business sign lights must be equipped with the photo control and be turned off at the close of business, unless the planning board approves an alternative alternative through site plan review and in compliance with subsection D. 5 above. See also 350-7.0 for additional standards for dynamic displays and other signs. And then there's a table listing the luminance limits. I won't read it. But so these are some of the existing default zoning ordinance for sign lights.
Right. And it sounds like the planning board may have some authority on this, but they don't, the ordinance doesn't mention the zoning board, which I think is a change from past practice, maybe under the prior version or even before this section of the ordinance existed, where we used to address what the ordinance seems to say, which is it is, has to be turned off at close of business, if I heard that correctly. But does that, Maureen, does that address your, your question and concern?
It, it does. And I think, back to Elizabeth's thoughts, I think we'll, we'll be able to have a brief discussion about our, our thoughts about it once we have completed our questions for Tracy, right?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do actually have one more, and it's mostly a technicality. In the application, Tracy, there was a discrepancy in the dimensions, and I would like to just make that, put that on record, where, and it's mostly because it threw me, where I read the sign dimensions in your application. I don't know if it's your application, but whoever filled it out was two foot, 10 inches by 14 inches. So I thought, I thought it was like a really much smaller sign. And then I read the specs, looked at the specs on the document, and I'm like, oh, oh, 14 feet, not 14 inches.
No, that was my, my error. I do apologize. I'm not sure which, I've filled out so many papers. I'm not entirely sure even sure which one that was, but I apologize. Yeah, it's a
Yeah, it was the official application file.
Okay.
So just, I want to make sure we, we, if we ever have to look back at it, there's some record of making sure they match up.
Yes.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant? Nathan, did you?
Thank you, Chair. Oh, sorry, Elizabeth, did you have a question?
No, no, I was just going to say you were muted.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, I, if the board does not have other questions, I, I had a couple of things I just want to clarify for the board and the applicant. There were a couple of questions I can ask later, or now, if the board doesn't have any questions.
If there, are there any other questions from board members? If not, we'll let Nathan go ahead and do that. Yeah, I think, I think we're good, Nathan.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so it's just Tracy. You know, this just, this is a part of the special permit. It's extra thick. So the, the standard maximum thickness is 12 inches for the wall sign. I did notice that it's about, I think, 10 and 1/8 double an inch thick, thick on the plan. And I just want to make sure if you add all the hardware and whatnot, if the total is going to exceed 12 inches or not.
No, this will be flush to the wall, and it will only come out 10 and an eighth.
Okay. Thank you. Let me just write that down. And then, yeah, I got a couple more questions. I, I believe already you covered the total area as, just want to make sure. It was 39.2 square feet?
Correct.
Okay, 39.2 square feet. And, and would you, do you remember the height, the top height, so the very top of the wall sign height?
The height of the sign itself?
Yeah, in relation to the, to the wall? Or, I mean, I guess, looking at it actually, it, it will be below the roof of the building, obviously. And actually, yeah, so, but I don't know if you knew the exact height of the sign, or, you know, you, you were going to place it somewhere on the wall, below the, below the roof, obviously.
I don't. I know I got you the height of the wall, which was 16. That was not good. They're not, they don't have a requirement for that for me. They're not asking me to put it at a specific height. So if there's one that you require, then we can follow those rules.
I, I, I think, I think in terms of height, I think, yeah, in this case, we can note that it'll be below the, below the roof line or some language, so.
We, we can make that part of our decision, Nathan, a condition?
Yeah, yeah, we can also do that, yes. Make it, yes. And, yeah, condition.
So there are no schematics that show us that, just looking back?
Well, the, the one we do have certainly indicates that it's below the roof line, right? It's doesn't skip up above the roof.
Close to the roof line. It's up above.
Is it?
It's toward, no, no, I'm sorry. It's, I didn't say that clearly, David. It's closer to the roof line than not, you know.
Correct.
Right, but it's not above it, so.
No, it's not above.
We could just, for clarity, we can have an explicit condition that, so there's no confusion in the future that has to be below the roof line.
Oh, definitely, yes.
There's a lot of glass under there, right? So it's got to fit within the
No, no glass. There's no glass, Elizabeth.
Not that, okay. Sorry, that's the wrong.
So actually, the picture that you have is showing prior to some construction. They closed that wall in.
Right, right. I got it.
It's, it's the one that shows the proposed sign Commercial Vehicle Center. That's now on a metal wall.
Correct.
And, and for the board's clarity, I can share like screenshots easily because I have two monitors. If, if the board wants, let, let me know. And I actually have the, I have the before and after of the proposed sign right now on my screen, if the board wants to see it.
Well, I think the pictures are in the staff report too, and it faces, to me, the thing that sticks out more than anything else, honestly, is, and it's been mentioned by Tracy, it faces the highway, you know, at least faces north up towards the highway, right? So that kind of relieves me of a lot of concern.
There's a whole parking lot that he, that he has, and then you overlook, I think, some foliage even. There might be some trees on, on the highway, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Although the one question in my mind for, I think all of us were around, maybe except Aaron. Is that the foliage that shields the houses and back on that little semi-circular street that, does anybody remember when it was Dana Automotive and, and that went on for years because of a failure to plant a green screen?
Oh, gosh.
Or am I in just the totally the wrong place?
That was before my time, I think, before
Do you remember, Elizabeth?
I'm trying to remember, but
A prior owner of the same property had, as a condition of a special permit, planting a green screen to shield the property from that row of houses that kind of sits over the Walmart parking lot. It's that semicircle, some, that, the curving road that, does anyone?
Is that Cook?
Right, that wraps around
Cook, yeah, Cook Avenue.
Yeah.
So
Pretty far. Cook Ave is pretty far.
That's what I wanted to confirm, that this isn't going to, we're not going to hear from the neighbors on Cook Avenue.
Oh, we might.
But I, I thought you were going to ask about the, I mean, there's a requirement of buffer between where the sign will be. If it's facing north, there's going to be a, a buffer requirement from that parking lot to the street, right? I mean, we, we don't have to deal with this, but I just think there is going to be
Yeah, you mean, yeah, you're saying there is a buffer. I think Tracy mentioned, there's a parking lot first, facing the sign, and then, then the road.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm personally pretty comfortable with it.
If I, if I may, I just Google Earth it. The road behind Ford of Northampton is Pine Brook Curve.
Oh, that might be the one. Yeah, Pine Brook Curve.
Yep, and that goes, so you have, you have some tree, you have some trees. You have trees, and then you have Prime Brook Cove, and then you have the parking lot to, like you said, Walmart, Smithland Planet Fitness, the plaza behind it. There are a handful of homes, but it looks like there's some trees. There is a there is, I can kind of tell that there might be some sort of fencing. There's a line, like you can see a barrier between the back of the Ford of Northampton, some greenage, foliage, trees, and then the neighborhood.
Right. That, and that line, that was a much disputed line of trees. It went on for a couple of years. But I'm just, I'm just trying to refresh my memory without
This sign won't even face those homes, and it won't, the illumination would be so minute, they wouldn't even see it. It would, I think.
That's not true.
Yeah, I'm calling up on Google Earth.
But Aaron, what do you think?
The side of the sign would be blocked out. It wouldn't even have any side.
It's not facing towards Pine Brook Curve. It's facing north, over the parking lot, towards North King and then the highway. So yeah, now I'm looking at Google Earth now myself and feel, feel very comfortable with it. Now, I, I just wanted to make sure that the sign was going to face the back of those houses on Pine Brook Curve, because there was a long history with, with those homeowners and who had a legitimate dispute because the landings were not installed.
But Aaron, what were you going to say?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I don't exactly have a question. I, I more have an opinion, and I don't know if this is the moment to express my opinion. I thought we were still on questions.
No, go ahead.
I appreciate, Maureen, your questions, speaking in terms of dark skies and like that. I mean, we have, within our own municipality here, we have set codes and standards because they seem good to us. And just because Ford Corporate requires a sign doesn't seem to me like a reason why we have to back down on our own standards in terms of how much light and how many signs and how much illumination, and the size and everything else. And if we've already done one special bypass for this business, I'm, I'm not sure I see a reason why a couple of years later, we should do it again. And I recognize that's an opinion, not a code, but that's my opinion.
I, I, and welcome when we decide we're at the point of discussing it amongst ourselves. Thank you, Aaron.
Any other questions from board members? If not, are there any members of the public? I see one individual. I don't know if that's for the next application, Doug Searle.
That's correct. Or, but of course, Doug, Doug is applicant for the next application. But Doug, obviously, if you want to make, if the, once Terry allows it, you can make a public comment for this one as well.
Yes, hello. No, I do not need to make a public comment. I am here for the next hearing agenda item.
Very good. All right. So no, I see no members of the public, so if the board
Can we just clarify the standard? I mean, we can do that after we close the public hearing. But could we clarify what the standard is for this analysis?
Yes, I think that's a really good idea because more than once, we've closed the public hearing, and then once we review something else, we realize we need to hear from the applicant. And once we close the public hearing, we cannot hear from the applicant. So as I understand it, the standard is, and I'm going to it, that we're intended, we're meant to apply here, is that the zoning board must determine that, quote, "the architecture of the building, comma, the location of the building or the land, or nature of the use being made of the building or land is such that additional signs or signs of a larger size would not detract from the character of the neighborhood and should be permitted in the public interest. Additional ground signs shall only be approved," this is ground sign, so I guess that one doesn't apply. So that's, next sentence doesn't apply. So that is the standard that we are required to apply or try to apply in making a decision on the application for the special permit. And we can continue that, this, that discussion as well. Yeah, Nathan, question or comment?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair. Yeah, yes, that was right. And there is a, after you apply the conditions or decide on the, I look at the conditions. After that, there's another section, I just will say that. The board of appeals specifies in the permit the exact sign permitted, the size and location of the sign or signs, and if applicable, imposes other restrictions. Any change in said signs requires a new or revised special permit, unless the special permit specifies what types of changes are allowed.
I have a question about, thank you, Nathan. I have a question about what David just read, you know, quoting directly from Permit Code, the phrase that says, "and should be permitted in the public interest." How, how, what does that mean, and how does that apply to this? What public interest?
I think, I think my, my unprofessional opinion is, is that in this case, in this case, I mean, I think we've interpreted that phrase very broadly in the past, and in this case, it seems to me we could interpret it to mean that this is informational to the public, if they wanna have their commercial Ford vehicles serviced, this is the entrance they should be coming to. Now, that might be way off, but that's how I've always assumed, I've always assumed that something as as simple as that meets the threshold, because, and I'll ask Nathan to comment, but because I don't know if there's either case law on point or other, other sources to help interpret the meaning of that phrase, but in my simple mind, it, it serves a public interest because it shows people where to take their commercial vehicles if they're getting serviced by this Ford dealership. I could be way off, because it's a private business, but Nathan, do you, does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
Well, before, before we turn to Nathan, because I, I'd like him to clarify this as well, I do, um, I, I tend to concur with that, because just the first, um, past hearing that comes to mind is the one on Round Hill, um, where there were gonna be two signages for different entrances to uh, rec programs for the school, and it was directing people to where to go, and so it was, that was the public interest there, so I, I think that's what we've tended to look at in the past.
And, and I would add that in this case, we, we have this weird topography and shape of the lot, and this entrance for the commercial vehicles is way at the back, otherwise, uh, perhaps difficult for people to find without the assistance of added signage, and I don't mean to sound like I've been hired by Ford, uh, obviously, I haven't been, but, but that's just my, kind of my gut feeling for what that's worth.
Thank you.
Nathan, anything to add to that discussion from the city's perspective?
Oh, I, 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 um, I concur, um, obviously, I don't, I don't have as much sign expertise as, um, others like the director, but yeah, yes, um, traffic direction, communicating with the public where the business is, um, yeah, these are all legitimate, uh, public interests.
That was my understanding, good, thank you. Um, any other questions before we have a motion to close the public hearing? After which, we're not allowed to ask questions of Tracy or anyone else, if there were other members of the public, or, or entertain any other comments. So we, we always wanna make sure that we we're ready to basically make a decision without any more input, other than time for our own discussion among ourselves, among the board members. Which we can.
Uh, Chair, um, just wanna know for the record, so two people who I believe are also the applicant for the next hearing, they just entered, Nick, uh, Nick and Ryan, so just wanna make sure if they have any public comments about.
Yeah, could we please confirm that neither Nick nor Ryan uh, uh, want to comment on this 5:30 application on Bridge Road? Is that correct, Nick and Ryan?
Yeah, we, I have no, no problems with the Ford situation, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, no comment on my end either.
Perfect, thank you, so, and I think that's everybody, so should we have a motion to, uh, close the public hearing?
Sure, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Uh, there's Elizabeth second, and then we have to have a roll call vote, because we're remote, uh, so Nathan, roll call, please, for this motion.
By roll call, uh, David?
Uh, yes, I'm, in favor, yeah.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, um, so the public hearing is closed on this application, and now do we want to entertain a motion on the application for the special permit?
Well, I'd like to discuss it, do we make a motion before we discuss it?
We, we could, we've done it both ways, so there, you certainly can have discussion after a motion and second before we vote, but.
It might inform the motion.
Okay. Okay.
My observation is that having driven southbound to just look at the site, driven southbound but, uh, on I-91, driven southbound on 5 and 10, driven southbound but getting off at the exit, southbound right before the site, no one sees, is gonna see this sign, it's barely visible, but, so, it's, it's, if, if it's required a red restriction by Ford, like, to me, it's like maybe wasted money, and Stacy, I, I apologize, because they'll be spending money on producing the sign, and good for you, but it's barely visible, because trucks block it, the elevation blocks it, the situation of the, uh, road to the elevated site, it, you just don't see it. That said, my only concern is adding, uh, lighting to the visual clutter, and that there, they have a really nice, large Ford sign facing that north direction. It's recessed, but it's large, it's really well-placed and really visible, so they're gonna have the Ford signage, they, recognition they need, uh, I assume that sign is illuminated, I didn't drive by at night, I don't know for sure, but I, I don't see it personally as anything that's going to take away from the character of the neighborhood, I just, you know, question the investment, which is completely out of our purview.
Okay, um, and should we have, have a motion now, or?
Sure, I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thanks.
Does, does that affect how the motion should get worded, in your opinion, Maureen?
It might affect what we say about lighting, but, you know, if we're saying that the lighting will only be during operating hours, I think that's good, I think that covers us, you know?
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think those are appropriate comments that, you know, if they wanna do this, and it's not detracting from the neighborhood, then, you know, and they are gonna be subject to the light, light, and I, and I, I do have in mind what Erin said before, and I, I do agree with that, which is that just because they want it doesn't mean we have to do it, but what, what we do have to do is, you know, if it meets the standards, then I, I think it behooves us to approve it, so, I, and I think that's where we are, I don't, I don't, I mean, I would like to turn off every single light in this city, you know, if anybody's been to Flagstaff, it's really quite lovely, but um, I don't think that's where we are quite yet, so, I, i- if, if we can go ahead with the, um,
Sure.
The motion. Let's see, I, I, I don't have the language in front of me, I, I, I guess I would just move to um, approve the, the request for a special permit to add the sign, which we've discussed in terms of the dimensions and, um, as subject to the lighting ordinances of the city. Um, and I think we also wanted to mention that the sign will be within the 12-inch maximum thickness, which, we've had the assurances it will be, but we just wanna put that into the motion itself.
And below the roof line.
And below the roof line.
As indicated in the, in the, um, mock-up or, or the proposed image, okay? We can still have discussion after a second, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, in terms of discussion, um, any other thoughts that haven't already been shared? Yeah, Erin, yep?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, I hear what everyone is saying, and, um, particularly about the character of the neighborhood, um, and how, you know, it's already industrial, and it's already on the highway, and et cetera, et cetera, it's also true that the character of that neighborhood in the time that I've lived here, has changed substantially, and it's changed substantially one little increment at a time. Um, and, um, it's, uh, you know, I mean, I, I obviously can't stand, can't vote against it, because you, there's three of you already there. Um, but I, I would, I would continue to push for considering the possibility that there's plenty of signage, and it would be, it's quite easy to find the Ford dealership. Um, and, um, quite easy to navigate that parking lot once you're there, um, without having to, um, get a variance. But, that's just an opinion.
Okay. Thank you, any other comments?
Along that line, Erin, and I appreciate that, I have always felt, um, inclined to really appreciate when the applicant uh, is able to provide us with some really, you know, good information about why they'd like us to do this, you know, what, what that's gonna do to improve their business, because we wanna support businesses, you know, what that's gonna do to, like, what brought them here? Uh, what brought them to this stage, and how this will be important for whatever, the residents, the business, so along that line, uh, it's just sort of a moving forward desire from my side to get more information from the applicant, even if it's not particularly necessary for the, you know, bottom-line code, like, uh, requirements about criteria for how we choose to approve or not approve a request for a variance or an appeal. What I hear is that you're looking for, why is this important to them, and I wanna support businesses, and I always wanna, I always appreciate when I hear more about uh, when an applicant is able to express what this is gonna do to, you know, further or improve their viability in whatever neighborhood or district.
Yeah, we've had a lot of hearings where it's been a corporate determination that the logo or something about the signage needs to change, and, you know, we've I think we've accommodated to that, I think, you know, the bigger picture is something to look into in terms of the ordinances of the city itself. Um, but, you know, we have a fairly discreet case right in front of us right now, and um, I, I think that's what we need to concentrate on, and whether or not it meets the standard.
Yeah, and, and just, I'll just, I think maybe reiterate or state my opinion, which is that I'm looking at the language and the ordinance, and I do not believe that this added sign is gonna detract from the character of the neighborhood, and when it comes to putting restrictions on people, how, how, and how property owners can use their land, I I try to be limited in, 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 in how I, uh, interpret whether restrict, things should be prohibited, and in this case, it's enough to me that it's an informational sign. Um, without getting into where you can see it from and where you can't see it from, but we're just all voicing our own individual opinions, which as volunteer board members is exactly what we're, we're, uh, meant to do.
I thought you were gonna say paid to do.
Nope, 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 um, so, um, I think any, any other, uh, a discussion before, we've had, we've had a motion with some conditions and a second, are we ready to do a roll call vote on the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, so Nathan, roll call, please.
Yeah, before, uh, Chair, um, before, uh, you know, before you approve it, I, I did write, I did note that, you know, your, the motion is to approve the sign, subject to the dimensions and the lighting ordinance of the city, maximum yeah, thickness is 12 inches, and the condition is, you know, below the roof line, as indicating the proposed plan. Um, I can deduce the findings, but just before we wrap up, um, would you, would, do you, and does anybody have sort of, like, a brief list of the findings that you wanna be listed when the?
Yeah, I, I think I could, I could say that, um, again, because of the unusual shape of the site and shape of the building, configuration of the building on the site, and the, um, direction that this, um, elevation faces to the north and the highway. Uh, I'll, I'll ask my colleagues to confirm that they support this statement, um. Um, I believe we can find that the architecture of the building and the location and the nature of the use um, are such that additional signs, and this additional sign with this larger side wo- would not detract from the character of the neighborhood, and should be permitted in the public interest as an informational and directional sign, does that work?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, I mean, if somebody doesn't agree, they can vote no, but I'm, I'm just saying, if this passes, it would be based on that determination having been made by the board. Um, so now I think we could take a roll call vote.
Okay, by roll call. Uh, David?
Uh, yes, in favor of approving the motion as presented.
And, uh, Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you, Tracy. And you can work with Nathan's office or the, and the building inspector's office for next steps, if that's okay?
That's, that's perfectly fine, thank you for your time, and I will pass this along to um, my customer, and then let Scott, Sarah know that we've been approved, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You too, bye-bye.
Thank you, bye.
I thought for just one minute, I'll be back.
Uh, sure. Um, actually, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna mute myself after I do. I'm back. I can't, I can't figure out how to get my normal background back, so I don't look like a floating head. Can anyone tell me that? Where do I go here?
You're not such a floating head.
I'm not, okay.
I mean, when I try to do the blur in the background, my hair disappears, so I, I have this strange look.
Whereas my hair disappeared years ago, so that's not my issue, but.
David, uh, may I help you with that?
Please, yes, please.
If you move your mouse over your individual photo and into the top right corner.
Thank you.
Dots and blur background.
Thank you, all right, there we go, thank you, Doug, appreciate that.
Oh, sure, of course.
So we're just waiting for Erin to come back before we hear the next and final application. So I guess we, we just need to wait for a sec.
Oh, and actually, David or other, others, when I'm typing, sometimes I don't mute my mic, uh, can you hear me typing? Was that, is that distracting?
I don't think, it's not fine for me, I'm not sure I even hear. Erin, are, are you all set? You're muted, okay, good, okay, so it's past 6:00 PM, so thank you to our next applicant for your patience. Um, before we move on to this, uh, one, I just want to make a disclosure that the application's being presented by Wright Builders, Inc. of Northampton, uh, and Wright Builders was a longtime client of mine, uh, at my law firm, Fierce Bloomberg, Ohm. Um, but I am retired now, thank the Lord, so, um, I am no longer affiliated with that firm or any other law firm, for that matter, um, and, and I don't, and I also don't believe that that past affiliation will affect my ability to be unbiased in hearing the application. Um, but I would just ask that everyone here, including board members, if, if you could just confirm that you're comfortable with that, because if not, I, I will happily recuse myself.
It's fine with me, I'm sure you're capable of handling this.
Okay, thank you, no other objections that I'm seeing, okay. Okay, so this item on the agenda is, um, come on, the application uh, for, uh, or the request for a variance to add a fourth parcel to a shared driveway by Wright Builders, Inc. at 213 Park Hill Road, Florence, MAP ID 43-123, this hearing was continued from, um, February 27th, meeting due to teleconference issues. And again, notice of this hearing originally was published on February 13th and February 20th. Uh, I'll repeat that, uh, we will first hear from the applicant or its representative. And I ask everyone who addresses the board to first, uh, give your name and address for the record that's being kept. This hearing is being recorded. And after we hear from the applicant or its representative, we will give the board members an opportunity to ask questions from the board members. Then we'll have an opportunity for any members of the public here, I'm not seeing any, but if there were who want to address or ask questions about this application, I ask that all comments be addressed to the board, not to the applicant. And after which, we will determine if we're able to close the public hearing and if we're able to uh, reach a decision on a motion tonight. Um, so if there are no questions about the procedures there, we will go ahead and ask the representative of the applicant to give us a brief description. I should mention that because this is a variance, a super majority vote is required once again, which would be from, uh, the full members, Elizabeth, uh, Maureen and myself. Uh, meaning, um, uh, a, um, unanimous decision is required to approve. This is a discretionary permit. It is also a variance, which I won't get into right now, but we will during the discussion because it's very rare that we hear an application for a variance, uh, for reasons that I'm sure we'll go into and, and talk about more. So I guess that's it for, uh, preliminaries. So we'll go ahead and ask, uh, the representative of the applicant to go ahead with a description of the requested relief.
Okay, thank you, David. Uh, my name is Doug Searle. I'm a landscape architect with Berkshire Design Group. I'm, uh, also here tonight with Nick Wright and Ryan Crandall. Uh, they are with Wright Builders. Um, Berkshire Design Group is, uh, along with Wright Builders is working, uh, with the homeowner, uh, Karen Randall. So on her behalf, uh, uh, the homeowner of, uh, and, and landowner of, uh, 213 Park Hill Road, uh, map ID, uh, 43123. Uh, the homeowner is looking to build a, uh, single family residence on the property. Uh, but there's a complication in the way that, uh, access to the land off of Park Hill Road uh, exists, uh, along the southern border of the road. There is, uh, a drainage ditch that it was identified that there is, uh, bank and bordering vegetated wetlands uh, within that area. And then, uh, just past that, there is a shared common driveway along the southwest uh, side of the parcel that, uh, already provides access to three homeowners. Uh, due to the, um, uh, discovery of the natural resources, uh, the applicant uh, had presented a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission of which, uh, in December, they had issued an order of conditions, uh, under limited project status, uh, not to get in the weeds about that, but, uh, that it, the Conservation Commission had, had approved a, a wetland crossing uh, over that, uh, uh, the drainage, um, uh, swale that had uh, bordering vegetated wetlands in it. And during that discussion at the, uh, hearing with the commission, they had, uh, requested that the applicant, uh, uh, discuss uh, seeking a variance with the zoning board of appeals, uh, to see if it is possible to have a fourth uh, driveway attached to this common driveway, fourth residence attached to this common driveway because of the, uh, impacts of, uh, the, um, uh, a wetland crossing would do to the, uh, existing bordering vegetated wetlands, uh, that exists along the southeast side uh, of the parcel that is adjacent to Park Hill Road. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, applicant saw no issue with seeking, uh, you know, seeking that request. Uh, given the unique circumstance of this, uh, parcel, uh, for the applicant, we thought that, uh, the unique, uh, a condition of, of the parcel and, uh, at the request of the, the, this is also supported by the Conservation Commission to try to reduce impacts on existing bordering vegetated wetlands. Uh, we thought that, uh, that there was a, a case to be made, uh, to seek a variance, uh, to alleviate uh, hardship to the owner to im- improve access, uh, to the parcel, uh, for residential development there and, uh, to, uh, alleviate pressures on existing resource areas. And so, uh, given that, uh, construct, um, and kind of complication, uh, the unique, um, character to the parcel, uh, we are requesting a, a variance following, uh, with, uh, under section, uh, 350, uh, 8.8 R, uh, number one, which, uh, in the Northampton, uh, zoning bylaw, which, uh, uh, puts a maximum limit of three residences on a common driveway that we're here to seek a variance for, uh, 213 Park Hill Road to, uh, uh, allow access to use as a fourth residence on that common driveway. Um, can I share my screen for a brief moment?
Yeah, Nathan, do, that, I know we can do that, right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yes, uh, um, I mean, he's the co-host, so Doug is free to, of course, Doug, you rather want me to share my screen. I have two screens again, either way.
That would be just fine, Nathan, if you, if you want to. Just very briefly, just wanted to, uh, show the, uh, site plan just to make sure it's clear, uh, what I had just described.
And to clarify, is this the site plan you, uh, or is this the update you sent, uh, today?
That's correct.
Okay, give me one second. Um, actually while I'm, it shouldn't be too long, but while I'm looking for it, we can discuss.
I'll be curious to know what changed today, because I don't think I've seen something new today.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm happy to explain. It's a, it was a very minor adjustment. The, mainly we adjusted, uh, the length of, we slightly adjusted the length of the driveway to reduce the slope of the driveway, uh, to, uh, bring the, uh, center line of the driveway and add to a 10% slope. Whereas before it was, uh, around an 11% slope. Uh, and so, uh, the, uh, applicant in discussion and Wright Builders in discussion with, um, fire department, uh, fire department was requesting that if the driveway, uh, center line was over 10% in grade, that they were, uh, interested in having the homeowner um, get a, um, uh, sprinkler system installed in the house. And they said, but if the driveway is at 10%, uh, following the center line or, or less, then we would be okay with not having a sprinkler system. So the homeowner was interested in, in seeing if it's possible to adjust the, uh, driveway uh, length, uh, to, uh, to accommodate that. So that this revised plan is, it's very similar to the previous plan that was submitted, but it, um, it includes this, this slight change.
And, and that satisfies the fire department?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
And?
Access for emergency vehicles, 1, 1% change in grade makes a difference? Or it's just what they've said?
Yeah, that's what they had said.
Okay.
And when you're ready, I, I can share?
Please, please do.
All right, okay, one, two, three, oops, sorry, forgot to press. Do you, do you see it?
Yep.
Yes, thanks, Nathan. So the location of the driveway, uh, uh, curb cut, uh, I've got my mouse on the screen, but that's probably not helpful for, uh, uh, the board. Uh, where the driveway is connecting to the common drive was slightly adjusted by about five feet in location. Uh, and if you move actually to the kind of middle of the map, Nathan, uh, to the, yes, that location right there. It was adjusted, uh, just to the, uh, west in this view, about five feet. Uh, just the entrance of the driveway to the common drive, that connection point, uh, was shifted to the west approximately five feet to its current location. Um, and then, uh, just the, uh, shape of the driveway, the circuitous route was elongated as such as to make it, uh, 10%. The, uh, impacts to additional vegetation, we'll be bringing that back to the Conservation Commission and also, uh, to the planning board, uh, shortly this evening, uh, for site plan approval, just to discuss. So we'll stay in conformance with all other, uh, uh, you know, Northampton, uh, regulations for, um, uh, tree replication, uh, and replacement as, as needed. But so the, uh, driveway, as it, as it actually, the entrance of the driveway, as it connects to the common drive, shifting that slightly west, which brought it up a foot in elevation, uh, on plan, which is shown, uh, with some of the hatching in the lower right, uh, corner of this plan set. Uh, there's an enlargement of that driveway connection. It moves it even further away from, uh, the wetland area so that the driveway, uh, is, um, uh, it's within the 50-foot buffer and, uh, but there, there are no permanent impacts uh, to the resource areas of bank or bordering vegetated wetlands with, uh, with this uh, change, with, with this, uh, request to use the common driveway versus what was approved by the Conservation Commission.
Right, so they, if anything, Conservation Commission should like, should like this, right?
Very much, and the Conservation Commission is in support of this request for a variance.
It sounds like they even suggested the.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
It does pave a little bit more land, but it's going to be made up for in other ways, right?
That's correct. It's, uh, it's actually, because the driveway moved to the left, um, and it brought it up in elevation, uh, it's actually a little bit shorter than the driveway length that was approved, uh, by the Conservation Commission.
Oh.
By approximately like eight feet.
Wow.
It's a win-win.
Yeah, it sounds like it. So, um, any, did you have anything else?
No, that, that, that is all. Thank you.
So, questions from board members?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that at the, um, last planning board meeting, this got punted until after we made a decision tonight. Is that right? Nothing else happened?
Uh, that, yes, my colleague, uh, Jeff Squire had attended that hearing, but that's my understanding.
And, um, not to go off track here, but just, so I understand where we fit in the administrative process here. I understand that we're here to make a decision about the request for a variance to allow a fourth lot because of the current limitation in the ordinance to three lots served by one shared driveway. But as briefly as possible, what is the planning board going to be hearing later tonight? In fact, pretty?
Well, pretty much, it's a good question, David, exactly that. Uh, it triggers, uh, the use of a shared driveway triggers review, uh, site of site plan approval.
So it's site plan review.
Right, otherwise the construction of a residence and a driveway, uh, on a lot in this district is by right.
Yeah, okay. So, okay, I don't, I don't want to. Uh, other questions from the boards? Anything?
I don't think I have any questions. I think the, um, the exhibits that we have pretty well explain this and the efficiency, um, and conservation aspects of doing it in this manner seem pretty self-explanatory to me.
Right, I, I, sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt the chair. Um, is it okay if I stop sharing or do you need a map still?
It's fine with me to stop.
Yeah, it's fine with.
Unless, unless there are questions.
I don't need it anymore, Nathan, unless anyone from the board, uh, still wants to see it.
Yeah, we can bring it back up if we need to.
Yep, yep, of course.
So, so, um, just by way of a little bit of guidance, um, um, of, of variance. So I, I assume people understand that what's happening here is the ordinance only allows three lots to share a driveway. This is going to be a fourth lot. That's the reason the Conservation Commission suggested coming to us for a variance because they, uh, in order to avoid having a driveway go straight to Park Hill Road across a bunch of sensitive wetland areas, as I understand it. Am I, is that correct, Doug, what he's just said?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
I don't want to mischaracterize. But for the board's benefit, a variance is, 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 um, and I also agree with what Elizabeth said, that I think this is kind of a win-win. But, but a variance is an unusual remedy because it literally constitutes a variance when people throw the word variance around, but it only means one thing, which is a uh, creating an exception to what the ordinance otherwise requires, which is why it's pretty rare because you're not supposed to create exceptions. Uh, but there are very clear standards about when to, when a variance can be granted. And it's right in our memo from the, uh, staff, from, from, uh, Nathan's staff. And that is, and, and so for purposes of making a decision here, we must find that, quote, owing to circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape or topography of the land, uh, and especially affecting such land, I'm leaving out structures because there aren't any yet, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance, which would be, you can't have four lots, you can only have three with one driveway, would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, who here is really the, the owner who wants to build the house. Uh, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the ordinance, um, or bylaw. So that's, again, I always like to make sure we're clear about the standard we're, we're required to apply. So I don't know if, if board members have specific questions with that language in mind. But, uh, in any event, in making our decision, that's what we have to find. Um, no comments? Okay, um, are any?
I don't have any questions. I just, you know, I know you're just sort of waiting to see, but I, as I said, I don't have any questions or comments. I just think that, um, this is the clearest case of justification for a variance where in the end, we're not only avoiding a substantial hardship to the homeowner, but we're creating, you know, a, a, a more sustainable, um, area by avoiding having to put in another curb cut, another driveway. Um, I, I, I don't see any downside to this and in fact, you know, appreciate the Conservation Commission's recommendation to come to us because this is something that we can do that I think is, you know, going to be beneficial all around. And it sounds like, you know, I think, um, I, I don't know, Doug, if you're the one that to speak to this or somebody else, but it sounds like, you know, I know we have the letters from the butters, um, that share the driveway and they're all in favor of this. Um, I think we've just been asked to ensure that they're all in agreement. They have whatever written documents, um, that are going to be required to effectuate this. Um, and assuming that's the case, then, you know, I, I think, uh, there's just no question that this is a good thing to be doing.
Right, I think that raises a, a, a good question, and that is, and maybe Nathan, tell me if I'm going off track here. Should we include a condition that there would be an amendment to the existing uh, common driveway easement and maintenance agreement that was required by the city the last time around, it always is? Or is, do we not, is that not, is that something the planning board deals with or?
Oh, thank, thank you. Yeah, that's a great point, Chair. Uh, yes, there is a, a language I suggest that we, uh, the zoning board of appeals put in as a condition. And I'll just read it. Uh, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall show proof or recording or revised maintenance agreement in compliance with the city ordinance that incorporates the fourth lot. And of course, you're, it's the board's right to modify and revise or add new conditions, but that is sort of the current, uh, language, uh, the staff is recommending as a condition.
Right. And by the way, another reason it's a win-win is now they go from sharing the cost of maintaining the driveway from three ways to four ways, um, which is what that amendment to the group, maintenance agreement would do. So, um,
I also appreciate hearing that the, um, that they had a way in from the fire department. You know, that, that's yet one more safeguard.
Right.
Because it was the fire department that questioned the grade, uh, that prompted this, uh, new plan we just saw now.
Right, and which means if you add that to the list, along with the Conservation Commission and what presumably will be planning board of site approval of site plan review, you know, we're getting all elements of the city, it seemed to be on the same page, or all author, you know, authorizing bodies. And the one other thing I would point out, and we could do this when we vote, but, um, again, variances are unusual, but this just seems to be squarely, it says, so owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography, we've got the wetlands down there, which is the only reason they need to do this. Um, so yeah, I think we're, I don't think we have to go further, as long as there are no other questions or comments from board members. And if not, we'll just confirm there are no members of the public present to comment. I don't think I see anybody, right?
That's correct.
So is the board ready to, uh, Nathan, did you have something? So is the board ready to Nathan? Did you have something, Nathan, something else?
May I may I say something? I I believe a lot of the a lot of what I'm gonna say is already kind of implied because fire department weighed in. Uh, one thing to consider is the intent of the zoning uh zoning ordinance restriction or limiting the shared driveway to three lots was I uh my understanding discussing with the director was uh emergency vehicle access. That was one of the rationale. So um for clarity in making a decision and stating your decision, you you can maybe briefly discuss that whether so um using the variance language in the Massachusetts general law. And that desirable relief may be granted with that substantial detriment to the public good and with that nullifying or substantial derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. So if the board wants to briefly weigh in on whether um this uh variance will um derogate from the intent.
Right, and I think you've just explained that the intent of the bylaw limiting a shared driveway used to three parcels, three houses was because of concerns about access and and um what's the word? Capacity of emergency vehicles and and the city's emergency services. And so as we've said, um we actually we actually have the City of Northampton Fire Department making a request, although this was to avoid sprinkler system, but that reduces the hardship on the property owner, frankly. But making a request and approving a a modification um to a 10% grade as shown. So so any decision we make will be based on the latest version of the site plan that was presented to us today at this meeting. And then um and we can be more explicit when we vote, Nathan, on our this how the support of our decision based on our determination about soil conditions, topography, if 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 more is needed. But I know that one I assume one reason you're suggesting this is because it's such an unusual remedy. We want to make sure the record um is clear about the reasons I think we all feel quite comfortable with it, right?
Thank you.
So are we if we don't need anything more, any other comments? If not, we can move to close the public hearing?
Unless there's anything else that any of the other folks have to say um that are attending this, then I'd move to close the public hearing.
Okay, in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and a roll call vote please?
By roll call or David?
Yes, in favor of closing the public hearing.
Uh, Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Maureen? Oh, Maureen?
We didn't hear you. Yeah, yeah, because it's remote, we have to hear it out loud. Um, so you said yes, right? Good.
Yes, I'm I'm rarely accused of speaking too softly.
So now we just need uh and we can have discussion before or after a motion, but a motion to um in, you know, in response to the request for the variance. Anyone want to make a motion?
I can try. I don't know how much we want to add put into this, but I'll move that we um approve the request by the applicant at um let me find my agenda. At uh to uh add a fourth parcel to a shared driveway at 213 Park Hill Road, Florence Map ID 43123, uh based on the understanding that the this is a um unique geographical situation and that the lot conforms to lot size layout and everything. The uh access is such that the entire frontage is wetlands and this direct access as suggested by the Conservation Commission will satisfy uh will will be successful and much improved solution over having a separate driveway. Way more words than we need. What else do we need in there?
Yeah, so those wouldn't be part of the motion, but those are comments in support of the motion, which I think works. Uh, but I do think we want to add a condition that um the let me just get to it. That prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall show proof of recording of a revised maintenance agreement in compliance with the city ordinance that incorporates the fourth lot. And also a condition that where this decision is 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 um based on the updated site plan that was submitted today by the applicant.
As presented today.
Today, yeah.
With a 10% grade, yeah.
Yeah, perfect. It does that is that going to work for you, Nathan? That was a little.
Uh, yes, I will uh it's being recorded. I will I will um I will uh yes, I will summarize it and present it. Present our set in the in the decision.
Right, because some of those were comments in support of the motion, but the motion is just to grant the finding based on today's site plan approval and subject to that explicit condition, right?
I'll second that.
So yeah, it's the explicit condition. Yeah, I'll note the I'll note that also. Yeah, I'll note the uh what uh the board said, Maureen and David and um Elizabeth said about said earlier just now. I'll put that in the finding section of the decision.
Right, the findings are that um I guess it doesn't need to be repeated, but we've we have it's based on our finding that and then citing the ordinance that the the circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape and topography which affect the land but don't affect the in general the zoning district in which the land's located would cause a literal enforcement of the provisions to to cause substantial hardship to the owner and the relief may be granted without and 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 the relief were asked to be granted will not can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying the intent of the ordinance. Because the intent of the ordinance limiting common driveway to three lots has to do with capacity of emergency services and their vehicles, and that issue is being addressed by the 10% grade and the approval of the fire department to have access uh based on the new newly designed driveway to the new house to be built.
Do we need to add um the agreement on the part of the other, the three other driveway shares?
You mean just point out that the three other lot owners in question have have uh submitted statements approving? Yeah, I think
Yeah, and whatever.
But it can't hurt to repeat that we we've taken that under consideration. Again, I don't know that it because this isn't one of these ones not substantially more detrimental, but but where that might carry more weight, but but there's certain I I agree, there's no harm to mentioning for the record that we take we've taken note of the fact that all three other lot owners or homeowners in the group have submitted written uh approval of and with with no objections to the the relief that is uh was requested. Does that work, Nathan?
Yes, I say all three other lot owners submitted letters of support for the proposed variance relief.
Right.
Well, we're not asking that they show proof of uh documenting a revised maintenance agreement?
Well, we made that a condition.
Okay.
We made that that was the one explicit condition of the motion.
Right, so so I guess to me that supersedes the need to um have permission, have letters from each of those individual.
Well, we already have the letters. We're we're just noting for the record that it's nice to know that all three other lot owners have have submitted written support. We don't have any objecting lot owners. We're not doing this over the objections of other homeowners. I don't think it relates to the standard we have to apply, but but it can't hurt to note that for the record, right?
Yes, and I mean, you know, it can be in the findings, just as a so not a condition, but something in the findings section, just.
But you're right, Maureen, they they won't be. We did make it a condition to get a revised written agreement, which means they can't do that if they don't have the approval of the other lot owners, and that would prevent them from moving forward. So I think your point is is a good one. Okay, so we have a motion with conditions plus a statement of findings. So I think we we can just have a roll call vote on uh.
Yes, actually, and um.
Just checking that nobody had any other discussion on this.
The other comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Nathan, you had a comp question, Nathan?
No, just before uh before I do the roll call, um so I understand that Maureen made a motion to approve the variance. Uh, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, great.
Elizabeth seconded, yeah.
Okay, great.
With that one condition, yeah.
Yeah, with that one condition. One condition. So I'm gonna take roll call by roll call. Uh, David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Uh, thank you. Good luck with the project.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. We appreciate your presentation. Good luck.
Thank you.
So we have a little more business. One, we have some minutes. And two, we need to talk about um I think voting for chair and vice chair. And I suppose three, we can talk about scheduling to the extent we know, because it sounds like already that second Thursday in May, Elizabeth and I will both be away, but one at a time. Uh, we could do the minutes first, I suppose.
That we approve. These are the minutes for uh, let's see.
November 14th.
Thank you. Yeah, will they they be approved?
I have one suggested change.
Yeah.
Semantics, but uh next to the last paragraph on the first page, the board members deliberating consisted of Elizabeth Silver, Maureen Scanlon and Aaron Irvin, a new associate member. I would prefer to have it read and associate member Aaron Irvin. New associate member particularly.
Right, good, good, good. I like I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, if the uh, see. Can actually just, oh, I'll I'll make the change. Uh, thank you. To um associate member Aaron Irvin.
Right, and period and sentence, yeah.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, so I think so I think we had a motion. So with that one change, I guess we just need a second.
I'll second if I can.
Okay, and and then roll call?
I I actually, I guess I am confused. I should I thought I should know this. Um, since Aaron is the associate member, can she make can she second the motion?
I suppose it'd be cleaner to have full members so that we don't have to find an answer to that question. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand the question because she was at that meeting, right? So uh and she was one of the three people. So it's kind of, you know, it's kind of odd to
Oh, I see.
Minutes if you were not in attendance, right?
Yes. Yeah, you know, just as a backup, uh it it just sounds a little weird, but could you do a double second? So I will know that Aaron seconded and I and and uh Aaron seconded and uh and then is there another backup second?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so just roll call on that to approve.
Okay, and that actually brings me to the question of do I include Aaron in the vote or the the full full members?
How about if we do it both ways?
Yeah.
And then we have it covered once we confirm if one way is right and one way is not right.
Careful, Aaron, you may be voted chair now.
So I I'm gonna just uh ask all four to uh vote by roll call. So by roll call?
Good idea.
Okay, uh David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, so that's minutes are approved. Now, in terms of chair and vice chair, um I had shared with um Nathan that um I'm 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 planning to step down from the board by the end of the year, so plenty of time, partly hopefully for the uh city to see if they can find a replacement, but also but because I'm going to be traveling so much, I'm going to London more and more. Been there October, December, going early May, and we'll be traveling more. So um which means, I mean, I guess I'll just see what people think, but my inclination is to suggest that might be a reason to step down as chair uh and let someone else have a turn at that, so.
But I disagree with you.
On what?
I don't think it's a good reason for you to step down. I think I think you should do it for as long as you can. You're the best chair we've ever had, David, so.
I would prefer to see you in the chair seat until you exit.
Yeah, me too.
Your expertise is profoundly helpful and informative.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, well, I can definitely do that, but although we haven't heard from Aaron. Aaron, but I I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but I can stay as chair, and there's no date certain. I can I can see how the year goes. I I can, you know, I can say that much. There's nothing hard and fast.
I I I think you sort of knowing that you're on your way out and we should be paying attention to what and how you do um might be uh worth taking notice of, but if you have uh energy for it, I think I I I would second what Elizabeth and Maureen have said.
Okay, so so, okay, so I mean, I'm I'm if I'm 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 well, I'm I'm comfortable staying on his chair and just seeing uh how things go this year. That's why I had such a long timeline because uh depending on how much we time we spend in London. Um, but uh and then I think Elizabeth is currently the vice chair, right?
Uh, you know, I don't think there's ever really been a vote. I think I just kind of slid into this while after Sarah left.
Maybe Sarah was the vice chair.
She had been, yeah, and then she left. So I I kind of because I was the next insigniority, I kind of slid into that.
Is that something you're willing to do?
Yeah, for now. I I I'm in a fairly similar position as you, David. I I hadn't really articulated this to anybody in terms of, you know, potential travel, um extensive travel. So I I would be okay for now as well. Little awkward, but you know, because I haven't really talked to anybody. Uh, but for now, yes, I can do that.
One of my issues with London is is that it's five hours ahead, so 5:30 PM here is 10:30 PM there, so that makes attending meetings remotely.
Yeah.
Like that touches on a question is is are we going to continue to be able to attend remotely, Nathan? Is there any up update on? Is there any reason that that could change? I thought it was sort of a COVID era thing.
You know, I uh surprisingly, I I not not no words came out. I suppose it'd be end of this month that when ends and I have not gotten a word from either side. I I I actually forgot to check. I apologize, but uh.
So what ends this month? The 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 ability to meet remotely could end if it's not extended, could end this month?
You know, I can Google quickly. Apologies.
That's okay. We could send us an email.
Yeah, yeah, it's yeah. I mean, in theory, if suddenly the governor or whoever's authorities has changed the, you know, law all of a sudden, or I they need to um they need to decide on something actually right now.
Right.
I am.
That could affect a lot of people.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
One speculation I dare say is uh I'm I'm guessing um a lot of legislators are discussing whether to make remote here remote um hearing optional or required or hybrid possibly required. I I believe there might be struggling with the different possibilities or requiring what types of formats.
I see.
But yeah, anyways, that's that's not relevant, so.
Right, I'll see.
Yeah.
And um and I guess the only other question I have is do oh, oh, so I do we need to vote on chair and vice chair, um Nathan? It's I guess technically we're supposed to do that. So so I guess it would be a motion to appoint Mia as chair and Elizabeth as vice chair?
Yes, and unfortunately, the the bylaw is somewhat crashing, so I can't look at the bylaw, but I think the overall idea, yes. Uh, elect the uh um elect a chair and a vice chair, yes. And if there are any any technicalities I missed, you know, we can. Elect the, elect the chair and a vice chair, yes. And if there are any, any technicalities I missed, you know, we can update on the next meeting. Yes, we need to elect after your discussions.
So one question I have is, should we do this now? Should we wait for Sherry or does that not matter?
Up, up, up to you. I mean, you know, technically, the, the way the bylaw is written, it's the first meeting of the year and they take this January or the first meeting of the year, if I remember correctly. So this is the first meeting of the year. So.
Wow.
And can we, and can we vote?
Okay, that's fine then. That's fine.
Okay, so should we just have a motion then? Maybe Maureen should make the motion since.
Yeah, I was gonna raise that. And if she makes the motion, can either of you second it, given that?
I was wondering, that's exactly what I was wondering.
And I, I was like, is this one of those books that would warrant all five of us?
Yeah, I don't know that this has to be limited to the.
Really?
Does it?
Yeah, you know, and it was unusual again, maybe.
Why don't we all vote?
Yeah, yes. And you know, whatever's a technicality would apply.
We could have Sherry ratify her.
Right, yes.
Okay. So I guess we will do a motion. And, yeah, we'll just all vote. So, but Maureen, do you want to move?
I'll move, I'll move that we appoint David Bloomberg to continue to serve as the chair and Elizabeth Silver to serve as the vice chair as of the start of this year.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and then I guess just roll call?
And I, I'm sorry for being so pedantic, but just as a backup, I understand Erin on seconded. Is there a backup second?
Oh, I, yeah, I guess I can do that.
All right, okay. Okay, so we got a roll call for everyone. David?
Yeah.
Elizabeth?
Yep.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Erin?
Yes.
Okay, so that's settled. And then I think the only other thing on my list is, do we know anything, Nathan, about upcoming hearing dates?
Zero application coming for ZBA. Planning board has gotten some applications, but not ZBA. So the, my current calculation is the earliest possible meeting date for, for the next meeting is April 24th. And of course, if nothing comes in by the 24th of this month, it's even further, further pushed back. So April 24th will be your earliest possible meeting day.
Okay, and then if you could make a note, Nathan, the following date, which is the second Thursday in May, Elizabeth and I are both out. I believe.
And I have an issue on the 24th of April, maybe. So.
See, let me look at one second. So, so Elizabeth or can't, you're not available possibly?
Well, the 24th is just iffy right now, but it depends, it depends on how much and how long it would go. I have something in Amherst that evening, but if we can finish in time, I should be all right. If not, I won't. But so we'll just play that one by ear. But the eighth, I'm with David that we can't. We're both not available that night.
Okay, I noted that. So Elizabeth's all possibly now available for 24th of this month and both David and Elizabeth are now available on the 8th of May.
Right.
Okay.
Good. So you'll let us know what comes in, Nathan?
Yes.
Okay.
So David, how many years have you been doing this?
I, it's, I think it's got to be 20. When, when was Mary Ford mayor? Because she was the mayor.
Well, before Claire.
Right. I was appointed by Mary Ford.
Wow.
It's a long time.
Well, David was in for 14 years. Claire was in for 12 years, so that's at least, right? At least 26 years ago.
Yeah, I think it was the 90s. I know that. So, long time, long time.
What about you, Elizabeth?
It's not as long, but close. I mean, it's probably been. Well, I think, I think Claire appointed me. I don't know. It's been a long time. I, I, I want to say it's been a good 10 to 15 years.
So so I guess we just need a motion to adjourn then?
I could have moved.
That's easier. Or second.
Okay, so Elizabeth moved and Maureen seconded?
And just roll call?
Okay, by roll call, or David?
Oh, yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Take care. Bye bye. Bye.